I'm going to call the meeting to order. And welcome, Dennis, again. We're so glad you're here. We really are. Okay, and I don't think we have, and of course, thank you Sharita for being here, too. Consideration of agenda amendments. Are there any changes that anyone would like to see?
Yes. I move that the agenda be amended to add a new item, 13(c) as follows. A closed session item pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711a8. Consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice. The proposed memorandum of understanding with King William County.
Do I have a second to this motion?
I have a second.
Sharon, seconds. All right, is there any discussion about this motion? Okay, in that case, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion has passed. Are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda? I do have one that I don't know if you all want this or not. On number 10, to put c, to put the audit committee?
It's about that time of year during, I'll start adding that as a...
Good.
Audit committee.
Yeah. All right, any other additions or corrections? In that case, I will ask for a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Okay, Joe?
I think that was Bob.
Oh, was it Bob? Okay.
Bob, and that was second.
And, okay, and Joe is seconding. Okay, any other discussion about amending it? In that case, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed. All right, next item is our citizens' time. And Peggy, would you like to speak today? Okay, okay. All righty. Okay, we will move on then. Consideration of consent agenda? Yes. On our consent agenda, we have the draft minutes from the April 23 Board of Trustees meeting, the May 15 Board of Trustees special meeting that we held, the acceptance of the April 2025 Board Finance Financial Report, acceptance of the April 2025 warrants, acceptance of the April 2025 monthly deposit record, and acceptance of the April 2025 fund schedule. Are there any, any questions, comments? I have one question, and that was that we have not received King William's fourth quarter.
We have not, last week I emailed their finance director and got a response from them that they were submitting it for payment last week. We've not seen it.
We've not seen it yet. Okay, okay, I just, I have noted that.
But yes, that, okay.
Good morning, welcome. All right. Any other questions or comments about the consent agenda?
Oh, I do have one question. The Choral Medical, that's for the AEDs, is that the total cost of all of them, the $9,000?
It's for six, because Guchlin's, Guchlin's was donated.
I, Montpelier already has.
Already had one. So that's a cost of, so the $9,875 is for five AEDs? Is that correct?
With the, the wall units as well.
Okay, I was just curious, did that, like, how many we got for that price? Got it. Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right, in that case, I call for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, Barbara, I need a second.
A second.
Okay, Sharon, seconds. Any other questions or comments? In that case, I call for the question. All in favor of passing the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes. All right, we're moving on to the directors' report.
Unfortunately, this piece is tethered to the wall, but I will lay down as far as I can, but it's been that I can. Speak to you all. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, members of the board. Library stats for April, new library cards, 113, over 61,000 items circulated, and over 39,900 library visits to our branches last month. So FY25 project updates for you. The new van has been outfitted, it's insured, it's at fleet. It will be picked up for us to start leasing on Friday. So we're very, very excited to have the new van. We will be surplusing Q4, two Sprinter vans, and a very old Dodge Caravan. So that, that van will be surplus, and we'll add the new Carter van to our...
And that, the new van will be used to go, to do all of the deliveries of things to the different branches?
Exactly, yeah, and then one of the decommissioned kind of delivery vans will probably be outfitting as our outreach.
Great.
So it won't be on the road as much, but it'll still be able to be used and be of the vehicle for us there. The early literacy stations, the ALL stations are all deployed out to the branches, which are great, these are those pre-installed software for young folks, zero to five, they train for those early literacy stations. There's two at Atlee, and each other branch got one, with the exception of Montpelier. We had looked at the tablet option for them, but unfortunately with tariffs and things there, those were delayed. So hopefully when ALL, the company that provides early literacy stations, can get those again, we'll have one for here. We just don't have the space for a desktop computer at this branch. AEDs, so those have been installed at Hanover, and Guchlin already had their AED installed earlier this year. Training was completed by Lieutenant Gordon with Hanover Fire EMS. It was excellent, he was very pleased to see that we have the same AEDs everywhere, so the pads and things can be used interchangeably with the EMS crew that they have. So he taught our managers how to use the devices, and offered generously to go out to our, to our branches and help staff feel comfortable to use that even that they need to. So those were great additions to our branches. Those are, are out, and I hope they are getting used, but they are available to us. So acrylic displays, so this was, you know, a major investment out of this year, but, and it kind of seems like one of those things, like, really, is it, but they are fantastic, and we've gotten a lot of really positive feedback on them. So I just kind of wanted to show you, you might have seen them on your way in. Those acrylics along the end caps there are, so that we can display things on the ends. We have these types. So this turns like your regular can-leaver shelving, you know, where everything's usually like spine in, to, you know, having it displayed nicely on the, on the shelf. As well as, these are like browsing boxes, so these can go on the shelf, but it lets the books be face out, so that the kids can look through those, adults, adults, too. But we have those available at all of our branches. Of course, Montpelier and Atlee already had some of the mag boxes because they're newer. But for all of our other branches, the mag boxes were new. This is Guchlin, I don't know if you're, most of our branches had those kind of fold up, and then the back issues were underneath. Now, they're, they're all, like, really nicely displayed, and that is just excellent. Hanover, so this is our Hanover branch where everything would have been, you know, kind of like spined out. Now they're able to really highlight the collection. So this, I mean, I think these will last for a very long time, just great additions to our branches. So there's that. We're still seeing solid digital Richmond Times dispatch usage for April, 835 searches with 286 luggages. I think we're starting to level out, but we're still seeing some good, good use of that new resource. State aid, there's been some good news with that. We had an early estimate from the Library of Virginia that we based our budget on for FY26. There's a new estimate out now. So if that new estimate gets approved by the board, that will happen in June with Library of Virginia, we're looking to see about $21,000 more than what we had anticipated, so that is great news. So if that, you know, if that gets approved, we will be looking at $527,745 from, from the state aid. So all of that we use for our collection development, so that is great, since, you know, we are already looking at a reduction in that based on King William's withdrawal. So the federal funds, the IMFLS monies, there's good reports out of that. The state, there's no changes in this year through September. They've received 50% of their federal funding to keep things going, and they anticipate the board receives the second installment soon. So that was great news on that front. On E-rate, there's some changes. So the Senate, they voted to not include hotspots in the E-rate funding. And that happened this month, a couple weeks ago. So everybody's trying to scramble and redo contracts. We had accepted a bid from T-Mobile for 100 hotspots at a particular rate. So we need to re, we're waiting to renegotiate that with T-Mobile. We had a meeting with them last week to see what the new rate is going to be, and whether we can come to an agreement, sign a contract with them again. The good is, is we, we didn't budget in FY26 for the reimbursement from E-rate. We've just budgeted the monies that we thought were necessary to fund what we, what we needed. So we were already looking at a reduction in hotspots, but I, I don't think that this change is going to impact what we had already thought we were going to fund. So we're okay on that front, it's just there are going to be some changes there. Preliminary audit work is, is mostly complete, don't want to steal the audit committee thunder, so I won't go into that. So we've done some staff AED training, we're just continuing to recruit for open positions. Lots of great programming, I think, still around throughout the system, as always. Sometimes broken records and that. We've had a couple of promotions from library associate to, to develop services specialists, and one separation, which was can capture our, our business operations manager. It's tis the season for AC and HVAC issues, so we've had multiple branches that are in need of repair there. Obviously, been installed or displays, and some other sound plumbing tech issues in various locations. My last, oh, I didn't talk about reference on demand. So we had 62 reference on demand appointments in this fiscal year. And what reference on demand is, is an opportunity for any customer to come in and book an appointment with a librarian for whatever they need help with. So this could be job, resume help, a lot of times it's with folks that need help understanding how to use their new e-reader, you know, how to use Libby, all of those things. So if they're feeling like they need just a little bit of additional help, one-on-one, they can set up this appointment time online or through our branch staff and get the assistance they need. So this is, you know, just on top of us answering questions on a regular basis just in the branches, so that help is, is available. We have that, Ashlyn, Atlee, and Mechanicsville, that's where our librarians are on staff. Oh, SRP, I need to do my shameless plug for SRP, so I gave everybody a flyer here. Adults can sign up for SRP. As well as, this is for all ages. So this year, Color, Color Our World is the theme that we've, we've got going on. Lots of great programs and things throughout the system. Beanstack, the app that is provided to us at Library of Virginia. We're using so people can have an app to log their reading and their children's reading. We also pay for registrations, if you come to the branch and register that way. This year, we did this a little bit last year, it was very popular, so we're doing it for every week this year. These are brag tags, and the kids get very excited about getting these. And so there's one for each week to encourage our families to come back into the library each week, pick up their new brag tag, you know, log their reading, make up new books, all of that. So there's, there's 10 in total, different ones for them to pick from this year, as well as they'll receive a book when they complete and a raffle ticket. So we've got raffles for Instapots and gift cards and lots of fun stuff. And as well as some really great programming scheduled for us. Some are, of course, animals, musicians, magicians, there will be a few musicians, too, throughout the, the library system. That, I think, is all I have.
I was going to ask just real quickly, have you, have you worked at all, or has Guchlin library worked at all? The Guchlin Fire Masked Line Training for the AEDs?
They did, they actually provided their training for them when they received it.
Great.
There.
I have one question, Jamie, I'm just wondering, is there any progress in hiring a business operations manager? Or have you had any...
I have, we, we have received some applications, but I have not worked with, plans to work with finance on those interviews. I have not had the opportunity to do that just yet, but we are still actively observing.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you very much, yes. I love, I have to tell you, we'd say it every week, every month, but I love reading about all the things that are going on. And I especially like the favorite funny name.
Was that Ashlyn?
Yes.
They always do some really fantastic kind of passive programming in their hallway. There was one, one time they did a, was it Taylor Swift or Shakespeare pose? Which one it was, very clever.
I also, I, I also really like your resource highlight. I always learn something new every, every month.
Great, thank you. All right, we are ready to move on. Dennis, do you have anything you want to share at this point?
We're going to talk about some of the things later on, but I do want to share two quick things. One, since the entire board last met, both the Guchlin and Hanover Board of Supervisors have adopted the revised underlying agreement. So the library will continue effective July 1 as a two-county rather than a three-county, and a year ago, a four-county process. As part of that, Hanover will have an additional member on Board of Trustees. Mr. O'Connor's term is coming to an end. On today, on this evening's agenda, the Hanover Board of Supervisors has proposed to appoint a new member, Rudy Burgess, is, I may be mispronouncing his last name, is proposed to be nominated to begin a term July 1. Hanover will still have another term that they may appoint at their June meeting, but the library will continue in its new form, as I mentioned last month, and this may just be some food for thought as to whether or not. I know in the past, the board has either had an ad hoc or has assigned a review of the rules as we're sort of changing numbers and things, it might make sense to reconsider that. Whether that's before July 1 or after July 1, I don't think it's imperative, but probably by the end of July, there should at least be a vision as to the rules of operation going forward. There shouldn't be any wholesale changes, but this is probably a good time to take a look at it and see if anything needs to be updated, tweaked, especially since things like quorum and, you know, we're going to have to make provisions for those anyway, so those are the two items that I have for now. Obviously, I will be here for the closed session then.
Would it, would it be possible for our board members to get a copy of the regional agreement that's been agreed on?
Yes, I certainly do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Dennis? In that case, we are going to move forward to the standing committee reports. We'll start with Finance Committee, Barbara.
The Finance Committee will meet on June 18. And prior to that meeting, we will be discussing also the proffers that have been made available in Guchlin. So exciting news for Guchlin. We found out, we got wind of the proffers. We were told previously that the proffers were of no value, and so Barb and I were like dogs with a bone, we said, wait a minute, what? And the previous administration here said, no, it's not worth it. And so we dug and dug and dug and found out, yes, indeed, we have about $104,000 at our disposal for Guchlin. So we will be working with Jamie and Guchlin to have good things come to Guchlin. But that's just a Guchlin thing, so we will meet with Finance Committee June 18, so stay tuned.
All right, any questions for Barb?
I have a question. Do they have a time limit on them? I know at one time...
2033. 2033.
Oh, 2033.
Yeah, so we have a little bit of time.
That's a lot longer than, okay.
We have, we have big plans, though, we're not going to wait.
Okay, okay. The only reason I bring...
That's a fair question.
Yeah, the only reason I bring that up, at one time, I was told the timeline on them was much shorter.
Yeah, the, the information that was dispersed prior to Jamie taking over was inaccurate. Let's just put it that way.
Okay. 2033. Hopefully I'll be allowed to see that.
Hopefully we all will, yes, we have, we have big plans, yes, we do.
Okay. Good, good job. Good job.
Any other questions for Barbara?
No.
Okay, the next committee is the Personnel Committee report, Bob?
Well, there's not, not much here to report. We are still looking, moving forward on, looking for a new director. And I see that we're going to talk about that in Old Business, I guess Jody will handle that. Outside of that, I have nothing to report.
All right. Okay, any questions for Bob? The third one is the Audit Committee?
Yes, well, the Audit Committee doesn't have a lot to report, except what Jamie reported earlier, that the preliminary stuff is finished. There was one outstanding item, has that been taken care of? No, still outstanding, trying to get Sharon's financial disclosure from King William, so, but we're working on that from all directions.
Yep, yes.
So, and then July 28 is kind of the Teams meeting where the auditors and staff and board members will sit down to talk about finishing up the audit.
Great.
We're planning to be ahead of schedule again this year.
That's wonderful, that is wonderful. Okay. Any questions for Christie? If not, we'll move forward with the Old Business. And the first item on the Old Business is the new Library Director Search. And I'm going to turn that over to Jody, who's been leading...
So it's going well, we're progressing in the search, we are conducting interviews, and everything is moving forward, it's planned.
So I have a motion to go along with that? Is this a good time?
So, I think it might be better if we go through the various things, that we can go in a closed session to cover all the items in one closed session.
Okay, so, but not do the 15 days from today?
That would be, I think, at the end, after the discussion, in closed session.
All right, got it, I told her wrong.
No problem.
All right. Okay, is, are there any other questions about the library search, Library Director's search? Okay, moving forward, next item on Old Business is the memorandum of understanding with King William County.
I will just say, we're scheduled to discuss this in closed session, but we have finally heard back from King William, and I will give you an update, and sort of we'll discuss options for the response to their comments.
Great, okay. All right, next item is the New Business. The Board of Trustees FY26 meeting schedule that the staff has put together?
It should be the last page of your packet.
Right. I have one question.
Sure.
On the December meeting, is that one that we could maybe move forward and have it on December 10 instead of December 17? That's the Wednesday before. I just, you know, things get, it's only a week, December 17 is a week before Christmas. I'm thinking it might get a little...
We can, so we can look at that.
Okay.
We're, we're early, so we shouldn't have problems.
Getting it into the schedule, yeah.
You know, we're just going to move that up.
Yeah. And we, I know in other years, we've not had a meeting either July or August, but I think this year with all the things going on, I think we need to keep those on the schedule. That's just my opinion. Any other questions or comments about the, the schedule?
So I think in the past, it was the August meeting that usually was canceled, but now with the change in school schedules, that wouldn't make sense anymore.
Right, we would probably cancel...
Moving forward, it would make more sense that July, if we get to a point where we feel like we can do that.
Yeah, I just think this year, we may want to keep it on the schedule at this point. All right, any other comments, questions?
Can we look at the evening meetings again that we have down? That was something that we were going to trial run this past year. Is that something that we want to continue doing, or is there any discussion about that? I know there have also been some comments that those meetings are scheduled the same night as the Hanover County Board of Supervisor meetings, when we do them on the fourth Wednesday in the evening.
I would say I'm not a fan, but if we do continue them, we should make sure that doesn't conflict with the Board of Supervisors meeting, you know, either Hanover or Guchlin.
When is Guchlin's Board of Supervisors meeting?
They're the second Tu, they're on Tuesdays.
Oh, they're on Tuesdays, but if we were to alter, yeah.
But Guchlin.
Yeah.
Is it like twice a month, second and fourth Tuesday, or?
Barbara, it's just the one Tuesday.
Just the second Tuesday.
Yeah. Do we want to...
What was the, unfortunately, since I wasn't here, what was the purpose of the evening meetings?
We had several requests from, from people who came and spoke who asked if we could possibly do the, do a couple in the evening.
I mean, you all could consider doing a different day, so that we're not, or moving it...
I think if, if anything, we ought to try to maybe move it, you know, to the Wednesday before, maybe.
To keep a Wednesday?
If you want to keep... I think keeping them on Wednesdays makes sense, if we can do them.
I've been, I've moved, I, I was able to book the Guchlin meeting room for the December 10.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you.
And so then we would be looking at the week before for the October meeting.
Which would be the 15th.
And then the week before for the March.
And the March one as well, with the week before?
That would be the 2/6.
So that would be the 18th.
All right, do I have a motion to accept the meeting schedule with the changes? The changes to the two evening meetings, so that they're not conflicting with Hanover's Board of Supervisors, and moving the December meeting one week forward also?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I don't know, I, I carefully reviewed the schedule, and I just think I'm going to abstain from voting.
Oh, all right.
I just thought I'd let you know.
In advance. In advance. In advance.
You're just rubbing it in.
Actually, I, I think I could support what, what the remainder of the board wants to do.
Good, we expect you at meetings. All right, is there any, a motion? Is there any, a motion for?
So moved.
So moved.
So moved, great. All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion?
We just have to confirm that we have the locations available?
I can sure this works.
Okay, yeah. So assuming that we get the-
Location is spent.
October 15th is available, but we've got still here, Montpelier.
Okay, great.
Working on it.
18th of March.
Okay. So as soon as Sherita has that, but we'll go ahead and, I think, go ahead and pass this motion.
Sure.
I'm gonna call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the new schedule has been adopted. Okay.
Yeah, and one is available also, the 18th of March.
Fantastic. So we are all set.
Great. Thank you, Sherita. Okay.
And I will know when the call comes.
Next item on the business is to go into closed session. Before we do that, we've had someone who joined us. Would you, I know you're, I'm putting you on the spot. Did you wanna make any comments today?
No.
Okay, okay, good. I just didn't wanna, you know, we have a small crowd, so I wanted to make sure if anybody-
I'm interested in this also group process.
Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Yes. I move that the board go into closed session pursuant to the following. First, Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, performance review of the acting director. Two, Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 for a discussion of prospective candidates for the position of library director. And third, Virginia Code 2.2-3711A8, consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal, legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice, proposed memorandum of understanding with King William County.
Do I have a second to the motion?
I do.
Okay, Sharon? Any discussion? All right, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion has passed. Okay, so we are gonna go into closed session. Okay, we are getting ready to open back up. Christie?
Yes, I move that the board certify that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Freedom of Information Act and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the board went into closed session were discussed in closed session.
Okay, so Sharon, will you do a roll call?
I will second it. Okay, yes. No, but she needs to second it first.
Oh, you second, yes.
I'll second it, okay. Barbara Sloan?
Yes.
Me? Yes. Bob Johnson?
Yes.
Joe O'Connor?
Yes.
Chrissy Schumacher?
Yes.
Barbara Young?
Yes.
Jody McMaster.
All right, so we are out of closed session and we need to talk about the business that comes out of the closed session. Bob, you have a motion for us?
Yes, I have a motion. I move that the acting director-
Has received.
-has received an outstanding evaluation and the Board of Trustees are recommending that she receive a 5% increase, three merit increase and two being outstanding increase.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Second.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? I will say that you did receive a very outstanding evaluation. Well deserved.
Did you call for a question?
I'm getting ready to. That was discussion.
Okay, I thought that-
Okay, I'm calling for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And I forget to vote. I said aye. I should have said aye. Okay.
All right, I have a motion for us. I moved that a closed session meeting be scheduled within 15 days of today's meeting at an undisclosed location pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 and Section 2-2-3712B of the Code of Virginia for interviews of prospective candidates for the position of library director. I second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's have passed. Okay. Is there any other business arising from our meeting today? In that case, I call for a motion to adjourn.
What about the pork loin?
Oh, well, Sharon, Sharon will have to share.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?